Good afternoon. Today is Monday, September 29th, 3:00 PM. This is a special called meeting, Rowan County Board of Commissioners. We're grateful that you're here with us, if you're watching, and those of you that are here in person. We'll begin our meeting as we always will. We'll have our chaplain, Chaplain Taylor, come forward. He's going to provide for us what's called a solemnizing prayer. That means that that's for us. It's not for you. It's for the Commissioners. We ask for wisdom as we're making decisions on behalf of the county. And following that, we'll have a pledge of allegiance. Commissioners, let's get started.
Commissioners, let's pray. Lord, we thank for this day. You bless us with, Lord. We thank for our county commissioners, dear Lord. Thank for their presence today, Lord. Thank for the time they put in to prepare for this meeting today. Pray you give them the wisdom they need today. Thank for the work they do for our county, Lord. Blessings upon them on our prayer request today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Yeah. All right, we only have a couple of items on our agenda, and I don't think we can add any, correct? Yes, we're not adding any, not taking any away. So do we have a motion to approve the agendas presented? All right, motion, one second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're going to have legislative hearing for Z-09-25. As Shane's on his way, we do have some superstars here in the office or here at our meeting with us. A lot of folks that we know, but we have Michael Julian, who is vice chair of our planning board, and then we also have the chair of our planning board with us, Carla Leonard. I put her name out there one day this week and put her former name, her maiden name, instead of, anyway, I was corrected. So, not by her, but by someone else. Welcome, you guys. Guys, we're glad you're here. Thank you for joining us. All right, Shane, welcome.
Good afternoon.
This is step 78 of a long process.
Pleasantly, yes.
This is a big day today, so thank you for being here.
So as all you know, the applicant in this case here for the rezoning request, Red Rock Development, represented by Todd Ward, and this will pertain to property owned by Carlton Fields LLC. A new term here, or acronym, R-R-I-F-I-L-F land, which that's Red Rock, and also Jason Murdoch owns a parcel, subject to this zone change here too, and we're dealing with seven tax parcels, 603, 45, 61, 112, 113, 114, 116, and 118, which is located here in gray. It is 385 acres, north and south side of Long Ferry Road, just east of 85 and west of the Leonard Road split off. All right, so the board will remember, about three years ago, this was our first approval in the original zone change out there for Red Rock. This is a 384 acre area, and the zoning prior to this date was rural agricultural, and it was rezoned to CBI/CD, based on the plan you see before you on the screen. Now, this layout proposed approximately six buildings and 2.66 million square feet of area use. The small area in red was not part of that original decision. It was a small tract that is now being petitioned this afternoon. With that in mind, one of the components of that submitted application had a use table that pared down the CBI zone to an exclusive subset of uses that would be allowed within the CD. Under Z-0924, which was approved 13 months ago, Red Rock had petitioned for data centers to be allowed use in that table. No other real changes occurred during that date, so this is our next process, the third application, in a zoning amendment for that district. And the request this afternoon is twofold. The first will pertain to the rezoning of parcel 603-061, owned by Mr. Murdoch, currently RA. It would be petitioned for CBI/CD, and currently it's a single-family dwelling on a nine tenths of an acre tract, addressed as 1985 Long Ferry Road. The second part of this afternoon would be to entertain a revised site plan. Now, what you're looking at here may be slightly different than what you have in your agenda packet, but by and large, it's very similar in the site plan, which I'll touch on a couple of changes here from what you've seen before. This arrangement, you have these large rectangular shaped buildings. There's 13 of them on this plan, give or take a quarter million to a half million square feet. These rectangles represent a building, parking area, other needs for a structure in sight, and is petitioned as a concept plan. So this is 13 buildings. You also have some other ancillary structures that would support an operation throughout the site, and we'll touch on those here shortly. So in this plan, one being a concept plan, you have this arrangement of buildings, but what's being petitioned with control would be the base CBI setbacks, 50-foot front, 10 side, 10 rear, 20-foot buffer. So just because the building is identified here, it could actually be anywhere on the site, subject to those setbacks noted, which is any CBI zone, what it would afford. You have a series of stormwater ponds that are depicted throughout the site. That, of course, could be subject to change, but more or less what you see in the meat of the site here is just trying to utilize that property for structures, as many as possible, in and around these wet areas. Along Long Ferry Road would be a proposed landscape berm slash plant-in combination, minimum of 15 feet in height, be on the north and south side, at least where they have the common ownership in a development project here. Any kind of access points, obviously site distance or other utility crossing needs would have gaps within those buffers. This is the transmission line for Duke Energy. Buck's plant is off-screen here. You have a plus or minus nine-acre substation switchyard proposed for the site, and we'll touch on some more details in a minute. Couple things I want to point out, too. It is a committed hard standard. On the northern line here and also the western line of this part, they're committing to a 100-foot setback for the principal structure, and the substation would have a committed 50-foot setback, non-negotiable. That's part of this submission. So up here is a use table we'll look at next, and then this part right here, I'll blow up so you can see it better. Thank you. Any questions about the site plan thus far?
Shane, this is the entire 385 acres here. There's no other land associated with this. It's not being shown here.
That is correct.
Yep.
On our use table, this is the same as approved before. They are adding rooftop solar. It was not allowed before. May have a need for a panel on a building, especially 3.66 million square feet, so that's being added in this grouping here. This is a concept plan. It's subject to the base CBI district setbacks and buffers, as noted. On the sidebar on the right-hand side, there's 16 items. So again, this is a real condensed version of that list, I think, that would be good for the record. Also, number two, the number of principal buildings may change. There are 13 on this site plan. It could be eight, it could be 15, 18, or any number therein. There's a 3.3 million square foot max. I do believe that's usable floor area for the principal structures. They may be rearranged throughout the site. You could have more on the north than you do in the central that's currently depicted, so keep that in mind. Said earlier, 3.66, 3.3, my apologies. This should say cast, so concrete, facade, they're committing to either tilt or pre-cast concrete panels for the principal structures, not the admin, accessory, and office uses, just the principal structures. The height would not exceed three-story, probably going to be less, but to be safe. Anything you see here, one of the reasons that a lot of this information's being presented is they don't have to come back for the fourth and fifth revision, if the board's comfortable with this. There's no limit on accessory building number or max size, which is the same as CBI. There's no limit on your size on this site, and they're proposing as such for ancillary buildings, non-principal structure function.
Will that be included in the 3.3 million?
No, sir. That 3.3 is the principal structures.
Principal structures and then whatever they want to build in support of those buildings.
Yes, sir. So 3.3 plus anything else that's ancillary. Not anticipated, but the property could be subdivided into different tracts. And if they do, there's proposal for no internal setbacks or buffer requirements. Inside that 385 acres, exterior, yes, interior, no. These drive connections, internal drives, may change, subject to the final TIA, DOT driveway permitting, et cetera. That screening is probably going to be more than this, but at a minimum would be 15-foot tall. Very likely is going to be a 15-foot tall berm with plants on the top, but just to be safe, they're not committing to that definitive number, and the full width in the plan, that's the minimum proposed here, 15. The TIA has already been, or there's been two TIA's performed. One back with the larger plan that had 11,000 cars. Most recent TIA said 1,800. We don't know what it would be if they revised the plan again, so this is stating that it's subject to any revised TIA if one is performed or required. The eastern plan, at least half the site is within the highway corridor for 85, and so it is consistent with the east plan. Would have an extension of those utilities, clearly to serve projects like this, so public water and sewer would be extended to serve, and then perimeter landscaping and parking sides of the rear of the building suggested, and they are providing, in general, a 50-foot buffer along streams, unless ones are declassified as stream or small intrusions were needed to put in crossings of those streams. We sent out several notices and had several phone calls with folks, and no one spoke at the planning board meeting, ironically, but again, we've had, I guess this is the sixth meeting, there was a community meeting by the developer in '22, so very few folks ever come out for any of these meetings, but here's the folks that received letters, leave 38 total. Here's the certificate of approval from previously. A lot of those conditions are realized in the plan or the statements on the site plan. Planning board recommended approval with two conditions. One is to provide a revised noise study, assuming it's data centers, with a final site plan prior to permitting. And then, two, a completed noise study within 90 days of operation to ensure that the operation satisfies the decimal standards for the noise ordinance. The planning board recommended the following statement, which is not in your packet, so I'll reference this later at that time if you want to consider this. So would need a motion for the statement and then also a decision on the request. Any questions I can help with?
Shane, when you're talking about noise, I've had a couple of constituents talk to me about the noise from a data center, and is there any research at all about, like, layers of trees versus one row helping to dampen noise?
There's a lot of things that they can do if they're running up to that number. If the plan comes back and let's say it's 66 decimals, if a study come back and it said that our project's going to be 66 decimals, one over, then they have plenty of different options they can consider, plant trees, other things to reduce that.
Okay.
All right.
One thing, have they, they have decided that there's not going to be a need for traffic study because of the low use that's going to be in there, is that correct?
The revised traffic study was approved by DOT July 30th of this year, and it was a reduction in a sixth of the proposed traffic that the previous plan had, so 1,841 trips. In that plan, they called for simply monitoring the traffic signal, a potential signal at the 285 interchanges, on and off ramp, I should say. It would have a signal at Willa Creek and Front Creek that would be required in this TIA. I don't know the threshold, if it was how much under 1,800 trips, if it would not be required, but in that submission, it would be. They had a recommended right turn lane for the primary traffic coming in the site, so for, and that's based on a different plan than this one. So for example, if all the traffic come in here, then this probably would have a right turn lane that would be required. So whenever the final plan is submitted, then that TIA may have to be updated, or it may be sufficient, and that's going to be up to DOT.
But this traffic plan is substantially less than what we had thought about in the other, when the other offers had started.
Yes, sir. One-sixth of it.
So you're going to have a right turn lane, but not a left turn?
Left turn would be a small facility, right turn, most of the traffic, because it seemed to be coming from the interstate.
Okay.
All right, anything else for Shane? Shane, I know you're not going anywhere. Anyone, applicant Todd, would you, Todd Ward, would you like to speak? Todd is from Red Rock.
Name and address, sir?
Please, yeah.
Todd Ward, Red Rock Developments, 301 Fremont Drive, Simpsonville, South Carolina. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for putting up with us all these years and coming back with new requests. We keep reacting to the market and what it's telling us. Originally, we did completely plan to do speculative industrial development out there, just like the plan originally was. The economy sort of slowed. There was a little bit of overbuiltness, I'll say, in the greater Charlotte or greater Greensboro market. You're perfectly in between, so we kind of waited to see what was going on. We didn't want to build an empty building. That's not good for the community either. So about that time, we had conversations with Duke Energy, realizing that, you know, Dukeville Plant is right there. With those conversations, we realized that, according to Duke and our research, that it was a great location for a data center campus. So at that point, we reached out to a few folks that we knew that was interested. We came back in 13 months ago, got data centers added as a use allowed by right to the CBI district. At that time, we started working with a firm on water and sewer with SRU, just to understand capabilities above and beyond, also working very closely with Duke Energy on a study to figure out all the utilities, what it could be, what it couldn't be, et cetera, et cetera. Realized that a lot of things were possible. At that point, when it got out that we had solved a lot of things, there was significant interest in the site. I'll leave it at that. We continued to work, realized that we got it to a certain stage, but one of the last things that needed to be done for any of that interest to move forward was to get a site plan done with a little flexibility, understanding who could come in, and as technologies change, those buildings may grow, may shrink, which I'll also add on to that, with those technologies, they have become more efficient in their cooling, so the noise associated with data centers 10, 15 years ago is not as much as it is now because they've gotten efficiencies. That said, as we said, we want to be fully compliant with the county noise ordinance. Prior also, the Murdoch home was, we were in conversations with them, did not see the need to rezone it because it'd just be part of the buffer on the front, so the zoning did not matter. It was not going to impact it. At this point, we have the Murdoch home fully under contract with the substation and some other things going in. We thought, let's just make it clean, pull that into the rezoning as well, or the site plan approval, rezoning the site plan approval. We worked on this plan with Kimley Horn. We do have Austin Watts here with Kimley Horn, if you have any technical questions, because I as a planner, the big picture, so let somebody smarter speak to any technical aspects of the site plan, but happy to answer any questions you may or may not have, and again, can express our appreciation for Rowan County enough.
I just have one question. You're up here so much, when are you moving?
Well, if I could find a good realtor for a house. It's a wonderful community. I would not hesitate to move here, I can honestly say that. My wife, on the other hand, born and bred in green milk, so, and I just do what I'm told, man.
Three of us understand that. Had a couple of questions written down, and you really alluded to one of, this site plan does look different than the prior one. I think we were looking for size and that back then, and kind of what possibilities can be. You had as large as a million square foot, but we've seen that fall out of favor, right? The market speaks.
Yes, sir, that's correct. In fact, if we were going to build anything speculative today, that sweet spot, assuming where vacancy rates and things like that are, is probably between 200,000 and about 400, 450 max. The big bombers, like anything else, will probably come back in a cycle. Couldn't tell you if that's five years or 10 years, but COVID really drove a lot of that, to have as big as you possibly could. The other thing I'll point out is that, as Shane mentioned, the floor area has increased, but if you also notice, the reason you can increase the floor area is because you don't have the truck courts that take up more acreage. So the developable acreage is pretty much the same if you look at what's going to be developed versus what our plan was. It just goes into whether it's parking lot, truck courts, turnarounds for trucks, things like that, or if it's more of just buildings, I'd say kind of like, in a way, an office building, where you just more or less have employee parking, so you're able to maximize floor area a little more.
So I don't want to say anything that's incorrect here, but I'll say this, and then you correct me if I'm wrong. The final built-out facility will likely look a little different than this.
It could. Austin, would you like to speak for that?
Good afternoon. Austin Watts with Kimley Horn, 200 South Tryon Street, number 200 in Charlotte. Regarding the particular site plan, this one, as you see here, was made for a specific tenant that we have a good feeling will ultimately be the end user. It's entirely possible that they won't be. What's interesting about these types of tenants is they're wildly different. I say this all the time. It's not like, you know, Walmart's not going here, we're going to do Kmart. It's the same-sized box, and the shells can be a little bit different. These are wildly different, depending on which brand and what technologies that they're using. It's like the difference between a Walmart and, you know, a petting zoo. Something just markedly different that has nothing to do with each other, and you find that insane because it's doing the same thing, but these are, the technology that they use, the access that they use, the internal processes that they use, they're so incredibly different that it may end up being something different. Now, it's a lot of words to say. It's still going to look generally in this shape because we don't have a whole lot of choice. Here on the left, we have a stream with a stream buffers. On the right, we've got a stream and stream buffers, and then obviously on the north, we have the road and parcels to the south. So there's only so much room that we can put it. So, you know, what these would be is in something, you know, if it's something wildly different, it's still going to be a box that sits right here. It's still going to be boxes that sit here and boxes that sit up here. So while the technologies may not be anywhere close to the same, while the access points may, you know, move from one side to the other, while, you know, security may be handled differently, it's still going to operate in the same manner, simply because, you know, the site constraints require that to be. You know, I foresee the substation always being in this location because, you know, the power lines are here on the right, and this is the direct access, and this is the location that Duke has said that this needs to go. So again, will it look different than this? Probably, because even if they sign this particular tenant, this tenant still needs to run it through its various internal vetting processes. So they may say, hey, we want this building here rotated 90 degrees, or we may want to remove a building. We may want to use a different prototype that we have. So there's lots of things that could change, but at the end of the day, the functionality and the overall appearance is generally going to follow this pattern. And you'll see that, this looks pretty similar to the spec industrial plan that was brought in before, simply, again, because of the topo and the stream features that are on site.
So the land dictates the...
In this instance, the land is dictating exactly, you know, how it has to be laid out.
What, I'm just curious. So the substation is here. How will the power get to that other building across the road? Does it go under the road or over the road?
Ultimately, in this case, more than likely, it would go underneath. I've reached out to DOT in the past to make sure that was acceptable. I assume that they probably could go overhead, but generally, that is all underground. There's quite a bit of ductwork that comes out of these, hence the large green spaces that allow utilities routing through this. You know, on the surface, these are relatively generic, and then underneath the surface, it looks like New York City, as you would imagine, so it's pretty complicated underground.
How many buildings would you build in the first year?
Good question. With this particular layout, I would assume about eight or so. It would be probably this western half with some ancillary buildings. That's subject to change, just based on the load ramp up from Duke, as well as, you know, whoever the ultimate tenant is decides that they need to build it. What they don't want to do is build themselves into a corner. So if they build all this stuff, and then the last building's down here, and then they've got spaghetti that they've got to try to weave stuff down to, it's kind of a nightmare. So they will phase this in such a manner that they probably build down and around so that they always leave a corridor open that they can get construction equipment into, that they can get utilities routed without disrupting, you know, these things, because once they come online, it'd be a nightmare to take these off.
Eight buildings in the, so I know there's a wait time because there's construction for Duke Energy, and that's probably an 18-month process, but my understanding could be different than that. But you would... But, but you would begin construction while Duke?
More than likely. Um, a lot of it, again, will depend on the internal processes of whoever the, the ultimate tenant is and how quickly they will allow it, but more than likely, um, we'll start with masquerading because there's well over a million yards. I think this was, I can't remember the exact number, I'm getting a couple of projects confused, but it was over a million yards that they have to move to. Uh, and this dirt is quite wet, so there is probably lime stabilization that goes into this, that, that extends some of the construction timeline. Um, so they will do some of that work while, uh, they are designing, you know, the, both the buildings and then the underground utilities for these. And then, you know, as has been alluded to before, there's quite a bit of off-site utility work that'll have to be done.
Any idea when we'll know something? As both of you schmerk.
Um, hopefully, no, later in the end of the year. That's kind of a target. Could, could be a little sooner, could be a smidge after, but, um, things are looking good, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, guys.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, Scott from EDC is here. Scott, anything from you? No? All right, this is a legislative hearing, so we do want to hear from the community. If anyone has anything they'd like to add to this, if you'd like to speak, we'd love to hear from you. We've been working on this and listening for a long time, so, anyone? Anyone? Yeah, come forward. Welcome, Mike.
Mike Julian, one thirty-five Whipper Will Lane, Salisbury, North Carolina. I want to start off, thank you for what all you do for the community. We really do appreciate it. Um, I want to also say I am in, by no ways against this project. I think it's going to be great for the community. I am concerned about this condition number two, um, stating that Red Rock has the right to make changes. You know, we've, we've required other applicants in the past to give us a site plan, and then that's the site plan that they have to stick to. Um, I think there needs to be a little bit of oversight, even if it's just from staff having to sign off on it if they need to make a change. Um, the last thing I want to do is hold up Red Rock with trying to complete this project in a timely manner. Um, but again, I think there needs to be some sort of oversight as far as being able to change the site plan once it is approved and construction has begun, so that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Mike, thanks for coming. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll close the public hearing. So we do have, um... So like Shane said, um, this did go through planning board. I, I attended that. It was very, very well done. Uh, no one spoke against it. I have gotten at least one call, um, regarding this. I know others have gotten some. Um, at this point, we, uh, would proceed to, oh, looky there. Look up and it appears.
Great.
Took a picture of it.
Make sure your mic's on.
Yeah, my mic's on. There we go. So at this point, uh, we would move to adopt a statement of reasonableness and consistency. Um, Mike, would you like to...
Sure.
...write that?
I'll make a motion, the Z O nine-two-five is consistent with the east area land use plan and reasonable appropriate based on the following conditions. One, industrial land use are encouraged within the IED five corridor. Two, the requested, the request complies with the CBI District's purpose and intent of using public investment infrastructure to provide tax-based and employment opportunities for the land and regional economies. Three, uh, property has been identified by the Rowan County, by the Rowan Economic Development Council as one of the best industrial sites in the county.
All right, there's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second. Further discussion on this? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then, um, we have, um, a couple of conditions, uh, to go along with this. Um, if we make a motion to approve Z O nine dash two-five, condition one would be a revised noise study must be submitted with a final site plan prior to permitting, and two, completed noise study must be submitted within ninety days of building operation. I'd like to ask Shane, um, a question because Mike has been kind enough to come up and, and share, uh, his thoughts, and Mike and I actually met together Friday to talk about this. Um, so is that something that you could, um, just maybe address and make sure that we're okay with, um, the, the plan or the, the road that we're traveling on now, so to speak? Yes, staff will still review a site plan. There's a component of that will come to our office. I mean, the main thing here is just, if there was any concern about the, with the board on the exact number of buildings, the exact orientation, the size of each one, um, you know, uh, speak now, but otherwise, it will come to the staff for review. And it does have those additional standards on the substation and the lots to the north. But as you heard too, I don't know, you can't really add any more buildings on the south side. It's pretty much filled up. But, um, you know, again, it will be reviewed by us for what it's worth. And I think we are trying to be flexible, um, because we know, uh, one thing Todd said was the technology is changing so rapidly that you could end up with eight buildings, or nine, or six, or seven, or whatever. I mean, it, it could change between now and then, and the fact is, we like to show that we are, um, sensitive to that and also business-friendly to that. And from this point, it appears to me it would just get better. I mean, if you're concerned about thirteen buildings and you'd rather have only twelve, that's a possibility, that it could be fewer, so, um, thank you. I just want, um, it's been an issue for, uh, or Mike has addressed it, want to make sure out of respect that we address that, um, because Mike had brought it up a couple of times. So Mike, again, thank you. Okay. All right.
Could, could I just ask, um, uh, the engineer or somebody? Uh, we're talking about thirteen buildings, the possibility of thirteen buildings. If we have one of these, let's say the average is two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, what kind of, uh, what kind of, uh, investment are we talking about, uh, for one building?
That, that's a great question. I know that it varies, you vendor to vendor. Um, the one that was in the news recently, uh, there was one in Richmond County that I think is about twenty buildings, and I think that the overall investment was about ten billion, if I remember correctly, as far as what they, they announced that particular one was going to be. I have not seen any, uh, numbers on this one, but that kind of gives you kind of an order of magnitude as far as the impact that these have.
And the one you were talking about was twenty buildings?
It was about twenty buildings.
So if we have thirteen, then we're a little sixty percent or so of...
Somewhere around there, if I was guessing.
So we could be talking about as much as twelve billion dollars?
At, at a minimum, it's in the billions, is what we're discussing.
Thank you.
All right, so we have these, um, these two conditions. Um, just want to say to Red Rock, Austin, um, the other developers, I know y'all have been working on this a long time. Uh, as a resident of Long Ferry Road, um, that, along with my fellow Long Ferry Roadians, uh, if that's a word, um, you know, that, that is a good parcel for industrial. And I said to someone, uh, last week that called me, that if we could write a script for, um, the best possible outcome for this land, this would exactly be it, everything. The only thing we haven't said is paint color. You know, I, I don't know what the paint color will be, but if we could pick that, then it would just be perfect. Um, this cuts down the traffic that we're con, that I'm concerned about. I gotta drive that five, six, seven, eight times a day. I drive a lot. I come back and forth from, you know, house to town, house to, I drive it a lot, so I'm there with those folks. The magnitude of the investment in this provides Rowan County with a future that is beyond, I think, what we could, um, imagine right now. This solves a whole lot of things for Rowan County, and so I didn't want us to move through this without acknowledging that this is a blessing for this county. We are grateful for Red Rock and for everyone that's had a hand in this and that will, and we are grateful that, and we, we have just been blessed by this. So, um, Todd, please pass our thanks along to John. It's been a long road and still got a little, got a tenth of a mile to go, right? Um, to see this through, but, uh, the county's doing everything they can do to, uh, to bring this home, and, um, Rowan County, this will, this will certainly help. This will be great, and, uh, some surrounding communities will benefit. Miller's Ferry Fire Department, folks that live in Miller's Ferry Fire District. This is a, this is a great, great thing. Jim, we, and Judy, Mike, you know, we've, I talk to folks and say, at least when we came, came on, we were worried about how do we finance, uh, a roof for a school? You know, it's, it's been tough sledding, uh, from a financial standpoint, and so, uh, Aaron and his team have gotten us a long way, and, uh, here we are, uh, staring at what certainly is the largest investment in Rowan County ever. Seems like every time we step up here, we say that, right? Um, but this may be the largest investment forever in Rowan County. This is so significant. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Todd, thank you. All right, considering those, uh, two conditions, um, do we have a motion to approve Z O nine dash two-five?
So much.
Go ahead. You have something?
No, no. I was just going to, uh, I'll second that, if that's okay.
That'll be fine. You have a motion, you have a second, further discussion, or further accolades to give our developer friends, or anything? All right, all in favor of Z O nine dash two-five, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Todd, thank you. All right. Why are you sitting here? Go get, go get to work.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, go make some phone calls. Thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you. Um, Carla, Mike, thank you. Appreciate you guys and the role that you played in this. All right, now we want to talk about a lease agreement. This food bank, this is interesting. Eli, are you going to talk to us about this, or is this coming from Mike or who? Eli? Thank you. Yeah, sort of. Well, welcome again.
I didn't come up with it, but I wrote the agreement.
Oh, you didn't come up, but you, but you did the, you did the work.
Correct. This is, um, a nonprofit out of Texas, Soldiers Angels. Um, I believe they may have approached Commissioner Caskey at some point about operating a food bank out of the, um, community center. They'll be using the space, it's already used by the VA for some counseling services. Those are provided just on Thursday, so this lease agreement is for use of that space. They'll have food and, and other fixtures in there twenty-four, seven, but they won't have access to it on Thursdays just to not conflict with the VA's lease. But this is, uh, if I understand correctly, a buy appointment-only food bank. It caters just to veterans, so they schedule them to come in and get the, the food and other items that they need, um, on a scheduled basis. I think they come in for fifteen minutes or so. Um, so they'll have their equipment in that space. They'll provide shelving, some commercial refrigerators, uh, freezers, and then the food as well. I believe they've received a hundred thousand dollar grant from the Charlotte Hornets to help them get this up and running, and they were on a tight deadline, which is why it's on the schedule for today, that I think they needed to operate their first bank by October seventh. Um, so they've already signed this lease that's before you all, um, and it's just waiting on board approval.
Mike, would you like to, uh, tell us kind of how this came to you and maybe add your comment?
Yeah, um, so I guess while I was gone, uh, they approached Justin, and then, you know, Justin got, uh, in touch with me, and we, myself and Justin and Aaron had a meeting with them, and, uh, they kind of went over, you know, basically what we've heard. Um, you know, there's some of the concerns we had, you know, I think of Malbin Met. You know, this is going to be, uh, probably at most, maybe two days a week, probably more like one day a week. Um, this is going to depend on, um, after, um, who sent there from the VA. So everyone's vetted, um, so it's not like, uh, someone just shows up and they can go there. So they'll have to be referred through the VA to this nonprofit. Um, this is a very reputable nonprofit. I mean, they had, uh, what was it, twenty-two million dollars worth of food they gave out last year, or something like that, around the country. Um, and they do a lot of different things. I actually, uh, got a, uh, care package from this group while I was overseas, and so they do that, and they have a couple of other things they do, so, um, they wanted to be near the VA, and obviously, we're just down the street, and, uh, fortunately, they got a, a good donation, uh, from the Hornets, and, uh, I think it's a win-win from every, for everybody, really, so.
All right, um, so Eli, we just need to vote to approve the lease agreement for RCC Food Bank.
Yes, one-year, one-dollar, uh, rent lease, so, yes, correct.
All right, any questions from the board? Mike, would you like to make a motion?
Uh, make a motion that we approve the, uh, lease agreement for RCC Food Bank.
Second.
All right, and Judy, second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thanks. Eli, thanks for your work on this. You continue to be a good addition to our team, so we appreciate it.
Probably as good a spokesperson as we have from his department.
You know, we, there, go ahead and bring it down there, Jay.
No, Eli's been the best thing that's happened out of this county in the last twenty years.
Is that right?
Been the county attorney.
Well, I think that was a swat at all of us, so that is fair. That was, uh...
So, so thank you, board. So thank you, board, for letting me bring him here, yes.
That was, that was earned, Jay.
But what, what Eli didn't share with you, um, is that I, I just wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Lynn Cornhour and her husband, Paul. Uh, we've been trying to negotiate some exchange of land near the airport to correct a mistake that's older than twenty years, I can tell you. Um, but, uh, but anyway, I, I took some tomatoes and corn out this summer to help negotiate, and by the time I left, uh, I had a laundry list to check the Salisbury, uh, city annexation because he had an old car they had cited, and they told him, uh, that he would be a grandfather, and he wanted me to deal with that for him, and, and so I'm, I'm pursuing that for him, and, and his wife, who is, uh, with the National American Legion Group, uh, mentioned, uh, this food bank, and, uh, she was trying to help that group from Charlotte come in, and, and, uh, and so by the time I left that day, it was not only swapping some real estate, but it was chasing down an old annexation, uh, notice that he got, and, uh, trying to get a food bank here in North Carolina in Rowan County, and, uh, and they kept my tomatoes and corn, um, on top of it, but, uh, but anyway, so thank you, Mike, for helping me get one step closer to getting this real estate straightened out at the airport.
Do you need any beads and other coins to go with that?
Do we have accounts that let me buy vegetables in the son of a hell?
I was going to say, all I learned out of that long story, Jay, was that if he ever comes to any of y'all with, uh, tomatoes and corn, he wants something. That's what I, that's what I got from that. All right, uh, no other business, uh, for the county, so do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, we have a motion, second? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be safe.